Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. The purpose of this meeting, this meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits members of the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. You know, we had to do this meeting tonight because of the code red, and I want to thank the staff who were able to put this together from home. And for those that if they had to go into the building today, and I want to thank all of them, Mr. Stevens, everyone included, thank you all for doing this. Tonight's meeting is to receive the report or a report from Dr. Kevin Castner and Dr. Wayne Harris of BWP and Associates, who will be sharing the results and feedback collected from the surveys sent out, as well as the community engagement meetings related to the superintendent's search. I will turn it now over to Dr. Castner for his slide presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to point out that what we're going to be presenting tonight, which will be a detailed report, and we will use the PowerPoint as an outline, will become public record as we finish this meeting. It will be available on your website, and again, people can follow it over the next month or two as they want to look at it. First off, when we met in October 28th, we told you that we were putting a plan together where we were going to pretty much go through a virtual process for community engagement. That plan has worked to perfection, and the reason it has worked is because of all the cooperation that we've had with the people in Prince William County Schools. Mary McGowan and her staff, Claudia, Jason, Lucky, B Simpson, actually, LaMara became kind of a hero here as we were bringing together all the languages. So I have to tell you that this has definitely been an effort in which the staff has really made this work. And because of that, where we are today, I can say that the product that we're going to share with you has the same or even maybe an expanded quality of anything else that we have done. So COVID has not ended up being a detriment. It actually has helped us rise to a pretty positive occasion, as you will see when we present this report. The report that you have before you, which we will go through a Reader's Digest version when we go through the slides, goes through a process in which we talk about quantitative information from the survey, qualitative information that we heard from remarks of the people in your community. And also, you're going to see in the appendices, you are going to see the recording of those remarks, and also, you're going to see the survey results, again, for three populations that we'll talk about as we go through this. On the very first slide, Jason, if you could put it up. Next slide, please. Next slide. Go ahead and put them all in. So the purpose of what we did in community engagement, as you allowed us to be guests in your community, was to identify perceived strengths and challenges of your school system, to talk about the qualities and characteristics for the next superintendent. And actually, with all the people we talked to, we asked them to become ambassadors, and we think we were able to develop a community understanding, and to explain that while we're presenting this report tonight, that we would hope that community would continue to engage with the school board up to the point when we begin the interviews, which will be in early February. So we put the point down to try to create the broadest possible community participation. I'm very excited to tell you just what that really looked like. The next slide, please. During the time that we were here, from November 30th until December 3rd, we had over 30 meetings with board members, county officials, employees. We really enjoyed meeting with your students, parents, community leaders, and we had three forums. We ended up interacting with over 220 individuals in our conversation, and remarkably, you have set a record for an all-time high for an online survey of 7,754 participants. The largest we have ever had in the past has been 2,200, and that was in Chesterfield County. So that type of outreach does reflect how your school system is engaging with your community, and I just think it's a very positive story. If we could now go to explain this, I want to explain a context for, I'm going to talk about the quantitative results, give a summary, and then Dr. Harris is going to go into the qualitative results. You need to understand that when you have 7,754 people taking a survey, someone's going to ask the question, well, we have a large county. We have 90,000 students. Is this reflective? Well, this is what I've learned over the years. When we ran the results of your survey, when we had 1,000 participants in the very beginning, and we looked at the categories that people were reflecting and the percentages that they were coming in, when we ran it, when we had over the 7,500, the differences were less than 1%. So the pattern that for your community remains pretty much the same when you have over 300 people. So that means that even if we had 40,000 people, we're still going to stay within these parameters, and we've seen this time and time again over the years. So you need to put in context that when you're doing this, and you talked about having this large number in a survey, 50% represents 3,800, 25% almost 2,000. So you're talking about a lot of people, and you're talking about people that, in this case, we're talking not just teachers, we're talking about people that have people in the schools, children in the schools, we're talking about parents, we're talking about community members. And so all of this, when you look at it, and we talk about how it's broken down with the participation, you can see that it is reflective of your entire community. The first question on the survey, when we were asking for the three strengths, when we talk about the three strengths here, one of the things we normally would see, excellent teachers and staff. When you look at the appendices, you're going to see many, many comments that get into more specific in their appreciation for the quality of the teachers and the staff in the system. The next one that rises up would be educational programs and options at 44%, and then good facilities and supportive community. You're going to see a pattern as we go through this presentation, in which all of these are going to be repeated in some different ways. One of the things that we also do, we separated the survey by the Spanish speakers, and we had that survey, and we had over, I think it was 900 participants, since, let's see, Spanish was 736, and we had 920 students. When I looked at the survey, I'd like to make a comparison of the Spanish speakers, was there any difference? And there was. When you had supportive community, the general population was 25%. The Hispanic population, it was 34%. When you talked about educational programs and options at 44%, I think it's very positive to note that the students put that at 50%, which would suggest to me that they appreciate the opportunities they've been given. So when we talk about the strengths, these are the type of things that as candidates will look at this school system, they will be looking at that in the report. The next question, the three most important issues or concerns facing your school system in the next five years. It's no surprise that funding is part of that. A lot of it is because you, as a school system, when it talks to per pupil, your per pupil funding is pretty well below some of your neighboring counties. So the fact that you're successful as you are, it's saying that you are getting a pretty significant bang for your buck. The next issue is growth, and you know the challenges of that in building new schools and redistricting. That whole issue is going to continue to drive you as you're going to be having, you know, I think the trend right now is about 2,000 students per year. The next issue has a counterpoint on educational options and programs. When you have 33%, it suggests there's issues involving the equity of the access to these programs, and also the fact that some of these programs are going to be involved as we go into this new COVID environment, and probably even the use of technology and its impact as we're learning, as we go, in the learning structures that you're creating for your students. The closing the achievement gap at 32%, we're going to be talking about that more because that gets into more specifics. And when they're talking about the achievement gap, the achievement gap isn't just about your low performing, it's also how we're doing with the upper level access to SATs, AP courses, and the significance of the enrollment, or whether it's balanced or not. When you look at this in more detail, one of the things on the survey that you don't have, because it was a lower number, it was community relations. That was at 21%. The Hispanic population put community relations at 39%. It shows how much they value that as an outreach. The other thing, that curriculum was at 23%, but the Hispanic population and students put curriculum at 39 and 35%. So it seems that the appreciation for curriculum from your constituency is something that they view as important. It also would suggest that there might be some things they'd like to know about the curriculum as we go through what the students are being taught. I now want to go into three important skills that you'd like to see as a superintendent. This is no surprise, communication skills at 78% is extremely high. Now, think about this. We're talking 5, 6,000 people think this is important. I thought that the managerial skill was a little higher than we're used to seeing. A lot of that has to do with the largeness of your county. You also are going to see that followed by organizational skills and interpersonal skills. All these things kind of fit in. The one thing that, again, the difference between the Hispanic population put the instructional skills at 74%. The regular population, it was 28. So you see a different appreciation there. Another thing that showed up, and I thought this was interesting, public relations for the general population was 31%. For the students, it was 47%. Now, I don't know what this means, but it might mean you might want to talk to some students still in the process as a board and have them talk about this. I know you have some groups, you have a member on your school board. That's just something you might follow up. So it's possible, as you look at some of this data, it might generate some conversations in the next month or so. Next slide, please. Now, we're still talking about qualities and characteristics.
Go back on, Jason. Yeah.
Okay. Are we back one? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Now, we got it right. So here we are. What would you like to see as far as the superintendent exhibit? I thought this was a very good question that you put in your survey, positive impact on student achievement. I think that that says it all. People want to see success with the students. Then you see integrity, very important. So you're talking about, you know, almost 3,800. You're talking about commitment to the community and good judgment. Those, that's a significant percentage. The results of the Hispanic population, again, this is interesting, commitment to the community for the general population was 38%. For the Hispanic population, it was 67%. What that suggests is they want to be involved in an inclusive way in your school system. Now, your outreach, I'm pretty, I am impressed with, but it shows how much they value that outreach and wanting to be part of the communication in your system and the exchanges that you have and the transparency that you have as a board. In experience desired for a superintendent, some of these numbers are pretty significant. When you talk about extremely important and important strategic planning, 97%. Now, this is coming from students, it's coming from your entire population. Would it suggest people want to see a strategic plan, they want to see a vision? Next, experience and instruction. You're looking for an instructional leader. You're going to be interested that many people also want people, want the candidates to have teacher experience. One of the questions you had, experience in a culturally diverse and multicultural community, 92%. That's extremely significant. The last one that comes in is experience as a superintendent with a proven track record. So people understand the complexities of your system, and they very much are going to value the importance of someone that has this type of experience. At this point, I want to turn this over to Dr. Harris, and he's going to talk about the qualitative information and how that was organized and go into the details on that. Wayne?
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the board, Kevin and I are excited to present to you the results of the time that we've spent listening to the 220 people who attended meetings and farms and interviews, along with the information that was recorded on the survey. One of the things that we found is, as we asked during the face-to-face meetings, the virtual meetings, how many of you have already completed the survey? A number of the people that we had in those conversations indicated they had also responded to the survey. What that says is, it was, they were wanting to be certain that their ideas, their feedback, was a part of this engagement report to you, to send a clear message to the board that this is an important decision, and they wanted to cast their ideas so that it would be noted. Recall that we began the community engagement meetings, farms, and interviews on November 30th, and we met then, over the course of the next three days, recording, we recorded every single response, comment that was shared with us, and it's a composite of that information that leads us to draft the leadership profile, which we will talk about as we complete a review of the data that we collected from all of those conversations. Go to the next slide, please, Jason. Recall that we asked three questions in those community engagement meetings. They are essentially the same questions that were in the surveys. Worded slightly different, but the meaning didn't change. And so the very first question we asked is, what are the strengths of the Prince William County Public Schools? What do you brag about? What's important? What do you say carries the day that is so important for students and for staff? Second question, what are the greatest issues, concerns, and challenges that you face now? More importantly, what are the challenges that your next superintendent will face? That's a critical question, because it leads us then to, what are the behaviors, the skills, the actions, the qualities, the characteristics that your next superintendent must demonstrate in order for the candidate to be a good match, and in order for us to then bring candidates who match to the board for your consideration to interview? And so the next slide will simply show you, what did we hear people say about strengths? What are the things that are going very well, that are good? What you will note is what Kevin said, and that is, there was consistency across conversations and responses to the survey about what are the strengths of Prince William County Public Schools. Excellent teachers and dedicated staff. We heard that in every single conversation, and they gave us specific examples, that teachers care, that they work together, that they care about students, that they reach out to students, that they go beyond, above and beyond. Second, that the diversity of the students in the community, it's like a United Nations, everybody pulling together, that there is strength in the diverse points of view. Everyone talked about the educational options, the specialty programs, the opportunities that students had to pursue their passion, their talents, to prepare for a successful future. The community is supportive. There are good facilities. Now, you're going to see that there is a concern or a challenge when it relates, as it relates to the older schools in the county, but by and large, there were positive comments that there are good facilities throughout Prince William County. Site-based management was cited multiple times as an asset because it allows the local school principal and staffs to make decisions about what's best for the students there, but you will see under challenges that it also presents a challenge when it comes to consistency and of communication and opportunities for certain groups of students. And finally, the fact that you have had only two superintendents leading Prince William County Schools over the last 30 years, they saw continuity of leadership as a major strength. What we have done is, as we listen to comments and we recorded them, we read those comments back at the end of each of the discussions to make sure that we captured the essence of the idea that was shared with us, and so that list of strengths captures what we heard a lot, the patterns and the things that we heard in all of those 30 meetings. Challenges, issues, and concerns was the second question that we posed. Note, the first challenge or issue corresponds to what was the first challenge or issue with the, on the survey, funding. And we heard comments about funding as it relates to resources in order to help train and prepare special education teachers to give them support and assistance. We heard many comments around the per pupil expenditure, and that it hadn't changed over the years very much, and so that was an issue. And also, funding as it relates to the second challenge, which is growth in student enrollment, and if the enrollment is growing, then we need more resources. Third, educational options and programs, and specifically, we heard the impact of COVID has made it extremely difficult to offer all of the options and the programs, and then how do we move forward once we get through this? The uncertainty of what's next with respect to options and programs is a concern. Closing the achievement gap, many of the concerns we heard had to do with the inequity in academic achievement as it relates to students of color, also, the gap that exists for special education students and some of the L students, but heard lots about needing to address, to overcome the gaps that exist, but also, how do we continue to support those students who are high-flying students who are doing well academically? How do we continue to challenge them? In every single conversation, there was a concern about equity, the inequities that exist because of different parts of the county where there are more resources, community resources, more resources related to the way in which site-based management is handled, being devoted, inequity as it relates to students of color being, having access to the various opportunities, the different kinds of classes, the higher level classes, AP, taking the SAT exams, you've heard Kevin say that. There was also an inequity issue as it relates to site-based management. So site-based management was both a strength, but certainly presents many challenges as it relates to communication, and even though there are system-wide protocols, what we heard is that oftentimes, from school to school, they're not necessarily followed. And then this issue of diversity is a strength, but the diverse nature of Prince William County, and ultimately, the schools, presents many challenges trying to meet all of the needs of the students, and it was not simply students of color, but it also had to do with special education students. Let me go to the next slide, please.
Wayne, I think the other thing on diversity was mentioned more often was in regard to staff, about trying to be sensitive to the fact of having more staff that reflected the student population.
It's in the leadership profile, and what I'd say is, concerns that the makeup of the school staff, as well as the central office staff, is not reflective of the student population, and so we had many comments that there needs to be concerted effort to diversify staff at all levels. You will see that comment as we talk about the leadership profile. So it wasn't, it's the diversity in the county, but it also has to do with the diversity of, the diversification of staff, the recruiting and retention of a diverse staff at all levels. Under qualities and characteristics, keep in mind, we are looking for, what are their qualities, characteristics, experiences that the next superintendent needs to be a good match? To be a good match and good fit means that they will be able to hit the ground running, continue the outstanding things that are going on, be innovative and creative, and actually move Prince William County forward. And so we organized those responses into four areas, and we did that because you will see in the leadership profile that the profile is organized under these same four different categories. Jason, go to the next slide for me.
You want me to take it from there, Wayne?
Yes.
Okay, the first thing I want to talk about is instructional leadership, and when we talk about it, what you're noticing, we're using the quantitative data when you look at these percentages, and then we're also taking information that we receive during these meetings, and we're trying to develop a pattern. So it's like you start out with a wide-angle lens, and then you go closer to a zoom lens, and you're going to see a trend. So you look at experience of a superintendent with a proven record, positive impact on student positive impact on student achievement. You're not looking for a manager. You're looking for someone that is instructionally oriented and has made a difference in whatever job they had. And they need to present that to you as a candidate. You then see when they talk about experience as a classroom teacher and instruction and instructional skills. One of the things that came up here more than a few times was experience with special education and English language learners. Also, an appreciation for career and technical education and being adept with technology. Again, some of the details involving this, you're going to see when you read the entirety of the report. The next part, experience in a multicultural environment and a diverse community. Again, you could have the superintendent of the year in Iowa. They could be fantastic as a superintendent, but if they don't have this type of experience, they are not going to be a match for your county. It's talking about looking someone with someone with a proven record of working with a type of a community that has a United Nations population, that has a combination of so many different moving parts. Now, one of the percentages doesn't show up, but we heard it continually in our conversation. Someone that is visionary, someone that is innovative and can take you to the next level. So visionary, sometimes we'll see instructional leader, but we put in visionary instructional leader because that's what we, that's what we heard on many occasions. The next slide, please. The next slide is pretty obvious. It has to deal with communication, active listener collaboration, ability to, with trust. One of the things that we saw that came up, the importance of being able to interact with students, hear students' voices and visibility. You want someone that's out there, not just for one event, but continually out into schools, which is a big task with so many schools that you have. But they also talked about in the present superintendent, that visibility was something that they looked as something very positive and they think that is something they want to see continue.
Kevin, may I add that the effective communicator had to do with communication not only out into the community with all of the constituent groups, but communication within the school division. One concern that was expressed was that oftentimes information doesn't come down to the school level and they learn about something that's going on through the media as opposed to from, from the central office or from the superintendent. So it was communication both within and without, within the school division and outside the school.
Next slide, please. Now collaborative manager. People aren't interested just in a manager. They want someone that can manage by working with the people. The whole idea that decisions are not made in isolation, but it's a type of team effort. So when you talk about organizational skills, managerial skills, they're talking about someone that is politically savvy, that understands the politics of schools. They're also looking for someone that has a deep understanding of site-based management to try to bring out its strengths. And if there's areas that they have to iron out to create equity and programs, they have that ability of using those organizational skills to bring that all together. Experience in finance, financial skills. That shouldn't be a surprise. You want someone that has shown fiscal responsibility and they know how to deal with balanced budgets. And they also know how to deal with the challenges of budgets, even as we're going through the challenge this next year of not knowing exactly how our budgets are going to come together. Experience in strategic planning. But in doing that, they're not talking about just a strategic planner in the sense of having a plan. They're also talking about the ability to be able to hold people accountable, to be able to show how continuous improvement can evolve to take something to a different level. And while you do this from year to year, they want to see this whole idea of continuing to, what do you mean by what is a world-class system? And so in that, they're talking also of the ability of the leader to be able to evaluate not only the strengths, but also the challenges with site-based management. The look at experience in personnel. This is something that is significant in the idea of being able to retract and retain a diverse group of leaders, both at the school level and central office level that reflect the composition of your school community. This certainly is a challenge in school systems all across the country, but it certainly is something that they'd like to see a priority in. They'd like to see how that would continue to work. It doesn't mean that you aren't working on it. It just means there still needs something that they would like to see that continue. The other thing that was, it wasn't a sidebar, so to speak, but it did come up that they're looking for a superintendent that has experience in working well with the school board, that can lead by example, can collaborate and not only work with the school board, but also with your county government and work as a partner and having the ability to do this type of navigation. So they're looking at someone that has that type of track record in doing that. Next slide, please. This next slide is pretty much a catch-all where you're talking about personal qualities and leadership characteristics. The whole idea of integrity, being a servant leader, good character. All of that fits in there. Someone that can make tough calls even when they're politically unpopular, that puts people before politics. That's what they mean by integrity. And good judgment, again, this comes back, courage, boldness and willing to navigate through tough places. Reflective. Under interpersonal skills, this came from the students. This was a good quote from one of your students. Has authenticity. Loves kids. Thick-skinned. Humility. Approachable. Commitment to the community. More than a few people said they're looking for, they've enjoyed the continuity. They're looking for a long-term commitment and someone that will demonstrate the will to be here. Also, they're looking for certainly the experience. And again, we reiterate this, in a multicultural environment and have shown a track record of success in providing leadership in which you'll be able to know as you, we will check our references and so will you, that someone has that type of skill set in working in a community similar to yours. So when we go into that, I'm going to turn it back over to Wayne. And again, I want you to understand that when we're talking about this profile, this is where we're going from the wide angle down into the zoom. And everything, this is a data-driven profile from what we've heard from your school community, making it unique for you. Wayne?
I'm sure you're sitting there giving talk to, how do you find somebody who leaps tall buildings in a single bound? How do you find someone who's faster than a locomotive? I mean, are we looking for a super person? No. What all of those responses, the data on the survey and the comments we heard reflects is an understanding of the complexity of being the leader of a large organization, an enterprise that, whose purpose it is to prepare the next generation of leaders, to prepare all students for success, to find the wealth in every single student requires the kinds of qualities and characteristics that the individuals in your community, employees, students, parents, community leaders, members of the Board of Supervisors and the board all said to us, these are the things we want you to look for. What we have done then is we have taken all of those data from the survey, from the conversations, organized them into a draft document that we call leadership profile. And we have laid out what we are looking for in four categories. Visionary instructional leader, effective communicator, collaborative manager, and personal qualities. And so at this time, what I want to do is to walk through the draft board, the profile for the board. And certainly we'll be willing to answer any questions because many of the candidates that we have talked with are waiting to complete their application. Once they see what does the Prince William County School Board and Community, one in the next superintendent, so that they can complete their application, determine first and foremost, are they a good fit and match? Will you go to the next slide, please? So the opening comments in the profile, you see those statements on the board. The Prince William County School Board seeks an outstanding visionary and innovative instructional leader who has solid experience. We will delineate what that means down into the parts of the profile. Proven success, leading and working in a culturally diverse school system and community both, not just as a school leader, because it speaks to commitment and investing into the community. A successful candidate will have demonstrated success working collaboratively. You've seen that term before, but with whom? The school board, the staff and community to create increased opportunities that gets at this notion of eliminating the gaps in achievement and opportunity in order to prepare students, all students, not some, for a successful future. And the bottom line is, the board is seeking candidates who can demonstrate match and fit with what is listed before in those four categories. Now before, Jason, you go to the next slide. With all due respect to the board, I'm not going to go through and read every single line of this. This is the draft leadership profile. What I'll try to do is highlight as we go through and then we can go back if you would like, if we need to clarify. So first and foremost, a dynamic leader who has success in a diverse community, who has implemented programs and initiatives that challenge students to achieve at higher levels. Note to close the gap. Second, someone who's approachable and will take bold action. We heard that comment several times. We don't need a person who's going to maintain status quo. Your next superintendent needs to be willing to analyze what's working and then be willing, have the courage to take bold action. Someone who is innovative, an executive-level leader who exhibits passion to work with staff in an open, encouraging manner and will insist upon high standards and expectations. And finally, under visionary instructional leader, a forward-thinking individual who understands teaching and learning and will initiate what's necessary to prepare students for college, but also career readiness. We heard, we're not just talking about preparing students for college because there are lots of students who desire to be ready to walk into a career. So it's career readiness and college prep. Next slide, please. Kevin emphasized this whole notion about effective communicator. If you look at these items under that part of the profile, it speaks to being approachable, being visible, working cooperatively. Board, staff, students, community. That includes with the governing body in Prince William County. Being an active listener who will be transparent, will be trustworthy, honest, build respect. Who will be a team builder, bringing all of the segments, not only within the school division, but the ability to work with all segments of the community. And finally, you notice again, a collaborative approach in seeking ideas. And who will support and will address and eliminate those inequities which affect students' opportunity to prepare for success. Next slide, please. Not just a leader, and there is certainly a difference. A manager pays attention to the details. It's very difficult to fix through analysis what's messed up in the design. Design has to do with details. So you're looking for someone who is ethical in all of their dealings, who can demonstrate an expertise with, with the money and the human resources, but also with the day-to-day operations. A strategic planner. You have brought schools online before because of growth. Your next superintendent will need experience and be thoughtful about how do you address enrollment growth, attendance zone adjustments and the new facilities. You have two new facilities coming online in the next year or two. Someone who is politically astute, both a leader and a manager. And the political landscape is ever-changing. Someone who can navigate that and work to build relationships throughout. Someone who has expertise overseeing fiscal and human resources. Someone who will create and implement a plan designed to increase staff diversity. I want to emphasize, we heard in every meeting, a need to diversify staff at all levels and establish programs that will equitably benefit all students because there are now pockets where students are not being included, not benefited. And one of the things we didn't mention earlier, one of the inequities has to do with the, what is seen across the board as discipline of students of color and special education students as an inequity of what's happening. A leader who brings an open and forward-thinking management style. Next slide, please. Under the personal qualities, it's reflective of what you heard Kevin say was in the survey. Someone who's personable, transparent, thoughtful and demonstrates courage will make decisions to eliminate obstacles that disrupt a wholesome learning environment. A person who is student-focused. You continue to see ethical, honest, trustworthy. Those are adjectives that came from the people who shared with us. Someone who's dedicated, who will be visible and who will commit to invest in the Prince William County community. Meaning they're going to be there a while. They're not looking to Prince William as a springboard to the next position, but they really want to come and stay to do the great work that you're asking of them. And then finally, a leader who demonstrates ethical behavior and integrity in every leadership action and behavior they take and exhibits the courage to confront attitudes and behaviors. We heard specifically from students a concern about racist behavior, hate behavior and other disparaging kinds of things. So we need a leader, a candidate who will address this head-on in order to eliminate disparities which limit opportunities for students. These are the four categories of leadership qualities, characteristics, experiences that we heard, that we have now included in the draft leadership profile. And we presented to you tonight, Mr. Chairman, Madam, and members of the- And we presented to you tonight, Mr. Chairman, Madam, and members of the board, for you to review, certainly we'll answer any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you both for that excellent presentation, very comprehensive. And thank you for meeting with folks from our community and all the different groups that you did. What I'm going to do is go through the board members, we'll do reverse alphabetical order at first for questions and questions about either the report and/or the final statement. We'll start with Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Dr. Kastner and, oh, I'm like losing people here on this screen. Dr. Harris, thank you so much for this report and all the time and effort that you took to put into this. You mentioned that as board members, we should be still listening to our constituents. So I'm going to ask you, if I need a little bit of help with distilling, are you available to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, and I'm going to stick with the three questions that you guys asked in your interviews. That's a, that's a good plan?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I plan on just taking more recommendations of what people are thinking from my constituent base. And I'll reach out and ask you to maybe help me distill that a little bit, too. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Lisa, one of the things I might suggest, in addition to the three questions, once the board reaches agreement on the leadership profile, they might want to comment to say if they missed anything. Or are there certain things they really appreciate that's being in there? So I would include that in the conversations also.
Great, Dr. Kastner, excellent point. And just to remind everyone and those watching that this report, the full report will be made available on our website. And I assume, Mr. Stevens, a video of this meeting will also be available for folks who want to watch the presentation.
Yes, we're recording it right now, so they'll, they'll be posting it at some point.
Wonderful. Ms. Williams?
Dr. Latif, may I just comment? We did have a request from one of the participants for a copy of the report. I responded and I've already shared with the board clerk the email that I received and my response. And so she's aware that you've already had at least one request for a copy of the report. And I explained that it's a public report, that it will be available. But B said she'll take care of it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Vice Chair Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So if we do take further comment from the public, once we vote on this leadership profile and it goes up for applicants to view and make their decision on whether or not they would want to apply, are we likely to make any changes to that? The reason why I ask that is, you know, a lot of people may have missed the meetings. It seems like, I know you said that we've had, from your experience, the most in community input and stakeholder input. But I'm curious, if we do continue to collect input, you know, how will that impact our leadership profile once we approve it? Is it typical to make adjustments as input comes in more? Or once we approve it and it goes up, that's it?
Lori, taking input from your community should always be an inclusive process, and you should continue that. What's most important, when you get ready to select candidates who you want to interview, you just, you don't want to be limited entirely to the profile. You want to also be able to discuss if there's anything else maybe the profile didn't bring out. So I think it's an evolving process. But I think you're going to find, you want to get at least a consensus on the profile, but that doesn't mean that that becomes the end-all and be-all when you're looking at the match. So I think there's, your good judgment and some flexibility, I think, is very appropriate.
Thank you. I think that matters. We, as a division typically send out a lot of surveys. And I think sometimes the general public and some, maybe even our staff feels like, well, once the survey is done or the meetings are done, if they, we continue to solicit input, that, you know, it doesn't matter. So I want to make sure that anybody listening knows that they still have that opportunity, that it's still very meaningful, and that it does matter, and we're continuing to listen throughout this entire process. Because this is a new process for all of us. So I just want to make sure that if I host a town hall or another board member hosts a town hall, that, you know, our public understands that we're continuing to listen and we're taking all of these things under advisement and relaying it back to you as our search team. So, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Williams. Mr. Wilk, Potomac District?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Harris, Dr. Kastner. So one thing that came up, so I think you guys know, I have a teacher committee at the Potomac District representing both my middle schools and high schools and 12 teachers. And one thing I've discovered in our discussions is there seems to be, one, a disconnect with site-based management, kind of a definition of what is actually site-based management and what one would call building-based management. But before we get to that, did you see, I see it's a strength and a weakness. Did you see more groups, different groups identified as a strength generally, and different groups identified as a weakness? Because I know you guys have central office groups, you have principals and administrators. And then, of course, you have teachers and citizens. Did you see any type of correlation with the group who said it was a strength versus who said it was a weakness?
I did not. I, I heard it. I think I had 17, 15 different meetings, discussions, interviews. I probably heard it in eight or nine. Both those who mentioned it as a, as a strength, but then they would say, but, you know, it creates some issues too. So I heard both sides of it, and it wasn't just from school-based.
Justin, one way you can look at this, when you look at the appendices, you're going to see the notes we took from each individual group. And you might see that there might be one group that might be more positive about it, another group might not be as positive. But when we had the forums, we don't know what groups they are. So that's why it's not as easy to answer that. It's just a pattern, and it isn't unusual for site-based management to have mixed reviews. It's complex. And so it isn't the first time that we've dealt with this with school systems.
Thank you. Okay, so my other question would be, so site-based management, there seems to be, in a sense, what I found is, you know, site-based management is the allocation of funds that a principal's discretion to better support their building. So my understanding, if a principal has lower scores in algebra, they might shift some money around so they can hire a second algebra teacher, whereas another building may not do that. Whereas a principal who allows their kids to decorate parking spaces and another one who does not, that is not site-based, that is a building-based decision. So did you, did you find that there was a misunderstanding generally when people talked about it? What actually was site-based and what was building-based with this decision-making processes?
We've heard both sides. We also heard that it gave excellent opportunities for principals to really reach in and do things unique to their school and their community. So again, we heard both sides, but I can't say that it's as easy to answer that question.
Wayne, do you have anything else you want to add? No, no, you, I heard both sides too. I didn't hear
I was just trying to see.
anyone distinguish site-based from school-based. They all talk in terms of school-based management.
Okay, I just think sometimes the term site-based is thrown out there when it's not actually site-based, it's building-based. Okay, that's my point. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Next will be our representative from the Gainesville District, Jennifer Wall.
Hi, thanks for the presentation this evening. It was extremely informative, fascinating actually, to listen to the feedback. So thank you very much. My first question is, was there anything that came from the other surveys that were in other languages besides English and Spanish that stood out as being different or unique? And if so, what would that have been from those populations? Or, you know, what kind of insights could we glean from those individuals who took the time to fill out our survey?
Jennifer, I'm going to explain this in two ways. When we had our community forum, I've never seen anything like it. When we're looking at the screen and we see translators in eight different languages. The attempt of your community to do outreach is most significant. But when it came to responses from the survey, there really were only 20 responses. So there wasn't enough to really have a pattern. What I think was more important was the fact that it was there. And I think what needs to happen now is, as members of your community look at this report and they have conversations in the next month or so, then maybe, then you'll get into some of the individual homes or individual communities as this happens. So I wouldn't take that as a negative. What I would take as a positive, and it was so impressive, is how you, your outreach was that the opportunity was there. Now, I think you just might want to take that to the next level. But we've had this, we were in DeKalb with a system of 105,000. We had more of an outreach here with your community than we had in that community. So I just wouldn't want to take it as a negative, but I think it was more important that it was inclusionary.
Thank you. That's, that's excellent. That's very insightful. My other question, or my second question is, can you give us a sense of the, I guess maybe for the public who may be listening, of the timeline, where would it go from here? So tonight, we're going to, you know, approve this leadership profile, and I know that will go out. But if, can you just kind of address or speak to that just a little bit? For what's our immediate next step?
We're going to cover that with our last slide in a few minutes.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. I don't have any further questions at this time.
Mr. Kastner, before I go into the next one, I think in the appendix of the full report, you listed the stakeholders you met with. Is that correct? Is there a list somewhere?
Yes, what you do is, you're going to find each meeting that we had and then notes from each meeting, and it talks about the number and it talks about who they were.
Wonderful, and that's going to be part of the report, folks, that will be made available public. Next, I'll be asking Ms. Diane Ralston of the Neabsco District. Ms. Ralston?
Okay, sorry, I hadn't. Thank you very much for the service that you have rendered us. To me, you have been, your organization, one of the biggest and best that I've seen in my years. And I'm up there with the years. How many times did you see people who were always complaining about something that we don't even understand generally? How do you handle that situation?
Ms. Ralston, when I think about the conversations that I had over the three and a half days, I didn't hear people complaining, even when they shared challenges, concerns and issues. They basically said, this is something that needs to be addressed. And then, in most instances, they followed when they talked about qualities and characteristics, they followed with, the next superintendent needs to be able to be visible. If they had a concern about not being visible or communication, if the concern had to do with communication, then they talked about someone who was a good communicator. So I didn't have, it didn't turn into a lot of complaining, the ones that I, that shared with me. They shared feedback honestly. I thought it was sincere. It expressed their point of view, but they really were excellent discussions.
Do you, did you notice anything about, around people who are, I'm trying to think of how to say this. How do you tell people in, you know, our community, we do the best we can? Have you ever heard anybody say that? About anything? You know, did you?
I think, I think the positive, the strengths, where there were multiple compliments of excellent staff, outstanding teachers who care, the community cares, the community is supportive. I think those were all positive statements. But there were also comments, we need someone who will take us to the next step. Who is a forward thinker, who is thinking forward, who will lean in, so to speak, who will move us forward, who will do things to prepare students. So they were talking about moving forward, not the status quo.
Thank you very much, you and your friend here. I want to thank you for the phone call, asking the questions. Our group here, brilliant people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Jessie, you're next.
Hi, first of all, I want to thank B and all the other people at Central Office who put this together, because this is a great deal of work. And I'm pleased that Dr. Harris and Dr. Kastner mentioned you in the report and said something this evening, because it's a tremendous amount of work. And the fact that we had over 7,057, 7,052 responses and all the people at the forum and students is an indication of the work that's been done by Central Office and working with you, and I appreciate it. I also wanted to thank you, because I read the report and I was writing down all these questions, only to find, I was calculating things, only to find there was an appendix. And it was rather embarrassing, because I called Mary today, I said, well, it's going to take me two hours to read this thing. She said, you're going to read it? I said, yes. And I was making all these notes and highlighting, only to find that you have an appendix that has everything, everything that I wrote in my little notes. You've indicated, so to the staff, go to the appendix. And you, you have done a thorough job. I also want to compliment you on your willingness to, how you ask questions. And then you said, this is what you said, and this is what I heard. And you came back, and to take all these responses, 7,000 responses, and to put them in a comprehensive report is, in my mind, very, very impressive. And I wanted to know, when I was reading through, are we, this leadership profile, are we approving it tonight with everything? Or do we have a second chance to digest it a little bit more and come back? The only thing that I saw when I was reading it on the personal qualities and leadership characteristics, I looked for things that were just consistently that permeated the report, and the judgment was one. And so I thought, a leader who demonstrates ethical behavior, I thought judgment should be one factor in there, because I saw that throughout the report. The other thing that I noticed was that, in looking down the road, and I think probably at some point, that I noticed that there were only two people in the classified participation. And I don't know if there's some way we can get, because I think that sometimes, you know, the professional people and some of the students on our leadership team are very used to asking questions. I, I would like to see more, if there is some input from classified, if somehow someone maybe in human resources could look at that, not to change the report. I just think it concerns me that only two people actually made those judgments. And the, you took all these ideas and I consistently, under site-based, it hit me that there were two points of view. And one was probably, one was negative. And you guys say you do a lot with research base. And I'm wondering if you have heard that, read that, on the site-based, they say site-based management and top-down leadership, neither one works, but they, they have a name for it. I think it's defined autonomy or something like that. But it basically means that, were they saying to you that there should be, we like site-based, but there should be what, instead of that big word of defined autonomy, that what are called the non-negotiables. There should be, there should be, you could, you know, you can, you can tell people, do you have to do this? You have to do that. And you can top-down, you can say you can do whatever you want, but these are the non-negotiables. Were they kind of saying that, or am I just reading it differently?
I think what we were hearing is, it's not either or. I, I think what we were hearing is it's not either or.
Yeah.
That you don't throw out site base because they're complications in a district the size of Prince William. There are many advantages to being site-based. If, if you're following system-wide guidelines, so there are parameters, there are boundaries upon which you don't go. On the other hand, you need the latitude to do what you do because you do a lot of great things. So I didn't see an either or, throw it all out or keep it. But rather the need to get a handle on it and have some consistency within the autonomy, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
Kevin, do you want to comment?
Uh, I just, uh, another way of looking at this is called directed empowerment. The whole idea of empowering schools is so important. But the idea of being directed is explaining the parameters of that direction. So you got to do both. And so I, I think that's a positive. Any district that wants to have cookie cutter schools are not going to be able to address the needs of each student in each area. So the direction you're doing has a lot to do with the fact that your schools are different. So I, I think overall, the key is how well this is working for your, your students. And again, your, your school system i- is a wellness school system in many ways, but it's not perfect. And that means it's just something you keep working on. So I don't see a red flag here. I think it's a question of, uh, keep working on adjustments and keep trying to work towards the equity issue of the results. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Uh, I, I think that even neither either or either, I think that there are things that have to be defined. Uh, I wanted to ask you about student input. The student, like in the discipline area, you're talking about minority students and their discipline. Did you have, uh, uh, a group of? The kids, you know, we have these kids who are very vocal and they're on the board and they're on all these committees. And they're generally very, um, three-point-one students. I know Lori said, I want some two-point-O students. And I want some kids who really had discipline problems there. Or did you find that you had kids who addressed or with that background? Like you found in the Spanish community, there were different points of view. Did you find that there were students who were underachieving students in your mix? Or did, did you, I'm, I'm not sure you could find that, but that's what I'm asking.
You know something, I wish we could have recorded it. The students were incredible and they, and they didn't think about themselves. They talked about all kids. So whoever was part of choosing or which students volunteered for that, uh, they did not. They, they represented your whole community. It was very refreshing. They didn't shy away from certain things. You can look at the notes. But another thing you can do is perhaps, uh, you might want to have someone analyze the student survey. You might perhaps invite a group of students to come talk to the board. So this conversation doesn't have to end here, but they were not one-sided in that. They really represented i- in a very, very significant way, all your children. You were impressed.
One of the, one of the final comments as we were ending the conversation with the students. One of the students made a statement and, and the others, another student said, I beg your pardon. You're not to generalize and make that statement because we're not all alike. Uh, I mean, I thought that spoke to the fact that this one student was sent, hold it. Let, let's have a conversation about this. Let's don't get this twisted. And, uh, it, it was a healthy, the kind of conversation you want students to have. You want adults to have those kind, where we can put our opinions forward and then let's discuss it. And we reach some conclusion about it. I, I thought it was excellent. Ms. Jessie, I want to make a comment. I, I was going to do it later. Kevin has already said this, but it bears repeating. Understand that we have done at least thirty-five searches together. The staff that assisted with what we've done thus far was outstanding. I don't want to name people because I'll miss someone, but we had technical support that was superb. We had logistical support, starting with the clerk and everyone in that office. From Mary's point of view, uh, again, I won't name people, but everybody who's assisted us has made this what is a difficult task, less difficult. And I give a shout out to them, to the board to know that you have outstanding people.
Well, I, I, I agree. Because I look at this report, it's, it's very comprehensive. And there's no way you could have gotten all this data and made those, your summary statements without the support of the people who did the work, the people behind the scenes who do all the work. So I just wanted to applaud them again. I'm just going to give you guys. And, and to the two of you, I think you've done a, an excellent job. You, I think you've captured our county. That's just my opinion. I think you've captured the concerns of our county. And we're off to a good start. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Um, I, I think Dr. Har- Harris, if you could take a minute while we're asking the other questions, do we even miss Jessie's concern about judgment into the profile? If you can find a sentence or two where we can do that, so we can vote on that tonight. Um, again, um, as Ms. Williams asked earlier, remember this is a guiding principle set of framework. But ultimately, as we interview folks, you know, you're going to represent your communities, which may be an evolving process as we go through this over the next few months. And so, um,
I was just looking at this one statement that said a leader is on their personal qualities and leadership characteristics. Say a person demonstrates ethical behavior. I thought judgment and integrity or integrity and judgment in all leadership, I thought maybe there, I don't know.
Ms. Jessie, that's perfect. If Mr. Har- Dr. Harris, you can find that sentence and add what Ms. Jessie recommended. I'll move on to Ms. Jackson's questions.
Yeah, yes.
And then when we do vote on the final sort of, um, statement, let it reflect Ms. Jessie's, um, edit there. And if anyone else has any, please, you know, offer those up. And we'll go through if there's any more questions after Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson?
Um, I just want to take a second and echo my thanks to the staff and to Dr. Harris and Dr. Castner, um, for putting this together. I know this was an extraordinary amount of work and I'm very grateful about, for the snapshot. Um, and it's kind of want to piggyback to what Ms. Williams and Ms. Agapour said about next steps and school board members. And when I was looking through the groups that were participating, like, like there was like a group of special educators. To your knowledge, were there any, um, teachers of students with, um, dual language students or students that received ELL services that provided input? I'm just wondering for my next steps as a board member.
I assume there were, uh, but when you had the forums, we, we wouldn't know specifically.
Okay.
The outreach that we saw from your, uh, your language department, I, I would, I thought, again, the important thing was that access was available.
Okay. And then, um, I just looking at underneath effective communicator under the first bullet. And I was just wondering if we could consider adding either the word stakeholders. It says a visible and approachable individual skilled and empathetic communicator committed to working cooperatively with the school board staff, students, maybe stakeholders, and then a Oxford comma, if that would be possible.
Please understand, ours is a draft. We don't, we don't want you to rubber stamp it. We want you to, the, the flexibility of generating anything that you think you want the candidates to see, it, it's within your purview. There's no problem. This isn't, we're not try, we're, we're suggesting that you do make these type of changes as, as you all see fit.
We have a very active staff members in our community. I was just wondering if we could include them.
Sure. Ms. Jackson, can you just, could you say that, could you say that one more time and say where you want that located?
Dr. Latif, Dr. Latif, I'm going to offer a suggestion.
Yeah.
I don't think you ought to try to wordsmith this right this minute.
Okay.
If you do, w- we will be here another hour or two. And what will happen is we'll add some language and someone else will say, well, I think we need to change it to this phrase and that word. I, I think wordsmithing is something that needs to happen. And I would, at the very least, maybe any suggestions ought to come to the board chair.
Yeah.
And you share that with us as opposed to us trying to go back and forth now.
So, so that's perfectly fine. Although that being said, I have all the time in the world tonight and I, you know, missed the long meetings we've been used to. So I'm, I'm perfectly happy to stay here all night. Um,
Okay.
And, you know, with all due, all due respect, what I, what I would like the board to do is vote on the, just the general profile you provided. Recognizing edits can continue to come in and we will adjust them accordingly.
Yes.
Especially if they are like, as Ms. Jessie points out and Ms. Jackson point out, really, I, ones that I don't think there's going to be a ton of disagreement on, what we can do is share them across the board, um, in, you know, and, and make sure they're all okay with it. And I think that, that would be satisfactory. Is that okay, Ms. Jackson?
Absolutely.
I just wasn't sure what, what the protocol would be. That's fine.
That's fine. I mean, I, I was willing to stay here all night to wordsmith this thing to death. So I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that too.
Dr. Latif, I said, we're not.
Okay, Ms. Jessie, uh, it was perfectly fine. Okay. Ms. Jackson, more questions?
No, that was actually the only thing I had was that. So I'm good.
Well, thank you. That was Ms. Jackson of the, uh, Brentsville District. We'll go back around one more time and then, um, uh, I guess we'll take a vote. So Ms. Dargapour of the Coles District.
Uh, I'm actually, I'm good. I enjoyed listening to the, uh, different conversations we've had. So, um, next turn.
Vice Chair Williams, Woodbridge District.
Thank you. Sorry, I had my, um, other screen up, wouldn't let me unmute. So I'm curious to know in you, in your time spending, uh, recording responses. We didn't talk a lot about email responses that you've gotten. You talked a lot about your, um, meeting with stakeholders and communities. But what, what could you tell us about, uh, what people have been emailing you, if people have been emailing you? Um, I'm really interested in that because we, we receive a lot of, uh,
Yes.
from letter template type responses. And so I'm wondering if you got any of those? Or if people even responded via email at all?
Well, thank you for, thank you for asking. Uh, we had about twenty-six email responses. Uh, a couple of times the responses represented groups. I read every one of them and it, I'd have to tell you, almost in ninety-nine percent of the cases, it was reflecting in everything we have in our report. In some cases, there were a couple of people that mentioned potential candidates. Uh, but all that's public record, uh, but they were all very positive. Uh, and they all had, you know, they definitely had some points of view. But there wasn't anything, one thing that stood out. I think it reflected everything else that we heard. And that isn't always the case. Sometimes we might get a, oh, a type of email where everybody just signs their name. We did not see that.
Ms. Williams, I'll also tell you that several of the folks, after giving feedback, sent us an email with what they had said to us. So we captured it. A- as Kevin has said, we, we went ahead and it was captured. It wasn't different from what they told us.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And forgive me if I didn't thank you first for all the work that you've been doing and stuff.
You're very welcome.
I think it's, you keep hearing that repeated and I keep asking, uh, again about the, the recognition of comments submitted because that's a major issue in our county. Really, it is important for us to, this evening, especially to let the public know that, you know, any response that they give and any input that they give is being read, captured, factored into this process. I don't think we can say it enough. I know it sounds like a broken record. Um, but we are a division that surveys and, and gets comments from our parents and our constituents all the time. Uh, but there's still a general perception out there that once it, you know, the survey is done, that that's it. We don't listen anymore, even though that's not true. Um, so I'm sorry to sound a little bit like a broken record, but I think we just can't say it enough. Also, I'm, I'm really interested to hear, we did talk about the youth. Um, I'm wondering, were they all sort of like high school aged youth? Do we have any younger, um, participants? Could you talk a little bit about that? Because, um, our superintendent now really has developed and, um, a, a fantastic relationship with our students at every level, elementary all the way up. I think that's going to be one of his key legacies. And our student base is really adamant about protecting that relationship. And they, they, I think really, that's one of the things that they really miss now because we're not physically in buildings and, um, that sort of thing. So I'm, I'm interested to, to know, you know, what the diversity looked like for, uh, students who put in, um, their, shared their input.
Kevin?
I think the diversity reflected your school system.
So yeah.
And, and, and you need to know, I responded, I responded to each email saying that it was received and appreciated. So we did, we did make that response. It, it seemed to reflect your school system. But it was, it was, it was high school students.
It was only high school students?
Yes, it was.
All right. Thank you. Cause I'm trying to capture a, a little bit more of a picture of as we move forward, if, you know, who we could reach out to more. We had a student, the first year our students were on the board representatives, they held their own town halls. And so they were able to gather input from all the grade levels. And I remember attending one. And some really fantastic points were made by some of our, our really young students. Um, so, uh, thank you for sharing that it was only high school. I think that's, you know, maybe we can do some outreach there. And encourage some of our younger population to comment as well. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Wilk, Potomac District.
I just want to say, you know, there's, I've been doing this for a previous job and it's a lot of work. It's exhausting, those town halls. I mean, and even just trying to collect the notes and the data points and all that. So, uh, as someone who experienced this, I, I want to thank you both for leading this and doing all the events that you did. And really trying to bring in all the voices possible, uh, to build this profile. So again, I want to thank both of you for this.
Welcome.
Wonderful. Ms. Jennifer Wall, Gainesville Magisterial District.
Um, I don't have any further questions. So I would just say, um, my guess is that this is probably the most important thing that we will do as a board is select the next superintendent for our great school division. So, um, with that, I want to say thank you for helping us and, um, thank you for this comprehensive report. And thank you to everybody, Mary, um, Bee, Claudia, you know, Lucky, Jason, everybody who was really key in helping this get off the ground in such a strong way. And, um, I look forward to, um, hearing more. I, I look forward to seeing who you can, uh, bring to us to interview. So thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Ralston, Neabsco District.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, I thank you very much for the, um, help that you have given us and the direction. Uh, so therefore that we are going to be totally inclusive. And have a happy school year. So thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Jessie, Okaquan District.
Uh, the, I don't have any more questions. I just wanted to comment on the fact that everywhere in this report, I saw sixty-two percent teachers, that we have great teachers. And, uh, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that all of us in this little Zoom room right now, they didn't talk about us. They talked about teachers and how important teachers are. And, and Dr. Harris, I think, uh, you said we didn't want anybody who, uh, was Superman and all this. I did give you a request and my request, I just wanted somebody who walked on water.
We'll, we'll work on that, Ms. Jessie.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Jackson, Brentsville District.
Oh, I don't have any more questions, but I'm very grateful for this process and, um, for the time put in to do this comprehensive packet. And for our staff that worked so hard. So I'm just thankful and I'm really looking forward to the next steps. Thank you.
Okay, with that, let's do this then. So we have one action item. This is going to be one point zero five, adoption of the final leadership profile. What I would recommend is that the Prince William County School Board adopt the final leadership profile as discussed this evening, recognizing Ms. Jessie, Ms. Jackson's, uh, edits and, um, recognizing that we will have further edits if needed. I need a second to that motion.
A second.
Okay, we'll take a second for Ms. Williams. Any further discussion on that? Okay, as seeing no further discussion, I will do a roll call vote. Okay, as seeing no further discussion, I will do a roll call vote. And I will do it because I have my list here in reverse alphabetical order. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Mr. Wilk, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote? Unmute, please.
Yes, I vote yes.
Ms. Wall, Ms. Wall votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Dr. Latif, I vote yes. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jesse votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Excellent. Ms. Jackson votes yes. So that motion carries unanimous. And I guess I'll just leave with a couple remarks here from the entire board to our community. Thank you for participating.
Dr. Latif, I need to get to the last slide.
Oh, what, what is the last slide? I'm sorry.
I want to go, I'd like to go over next steps if I could.
Oh, got it. Sorry about that.
No problem.
All right, next steps.
But I, but I have to tell you, we very much appreciate the very first part of that slide that said that the board in essence has approved the profile with the types of suggestions in there. So the concept approval, we very much appreciate. We will make those, we can make those edits and we'll work with you on that. And after we make those edits, we'll put the, we'll put those up on our, our website. Now, at this point, where we are, I'd like to at least give a update on the candidate pool. As you know, we've been up and running for, since the beginning of November. We have twenty applicants at this point. They are from eleven states all across this country. There are seven of them that are superintendents. Some of them are superintendents in systems larger than yours. Some are superintendents in systems smaller. At this point, we know that many people are waiting to see this profile. And anyone out there right now in school systems have been so busy in their schools, I think they're probably waiting for the winter break to consider whether they're going to put the applications in, which the deadline is January, or excuse me, January twenty-seventh. What you as a board need to be thinking about, the month of February is also a month where you do budgets and you need to figure out your schedules. It's going to be challenging, but you need to talk about, we would probably come to you somewhere around February tenth, but, and then we would present the candidates and then you would have to schedule first round interviews, second round interviews. And so I think you need to be beginning to think of what that's going to look like in your calendars and all the other responsibilities you have. Wait after, maybe after winter break, that's something you're going to have to at least perhaps get a, a draft schedule. If I had to tell you to backward map, we definitely could present candidates by February tenth. I don't even know what day of the week that is, but we have a little flexibility there. And then at that point, after you present, within the next three or four days, you start working with the first round of interviews. So there's some flexibility there, but that's what you need to consider. With that being said, Wayne, do you have anything else to add on the count?
To, to give them a little more information, our goal is to present the top four to six candidates out of that total pool that match and fit, knowing that we're only talking about maximum six interviews, maximum. That should help you in terms of trying to figure out the days you're going to need and, and how much time you want to do. Obviously you have, you're going to see all of the, the folks who have applied and you could choose to interview more than that. But what we will do is recommend the top four to six based on matching fit.
Wonderful.
Dr. Latif, that's what we wanted to share with you.
Well, this board is used to long meetings, lots of meetings. I think every school board in the nation is used to that right now. So I think we're, we're fit and ready for the work that's ahead. So we want to thank you all for, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. While we have this platform, I think it's also important for the public to understand again, maybe Mr. Kastner or Mr. Harris can go over what that looks like when we start receiving the candidate's information and interview processes. Because I remembered our introductory meeting, that was very important, the, the ability to keep that private and, and the reasons thus far, because I think, you know, public is always very concerned about us being transparent. But I remember you spoke about, about why it is that, that, that activity is typically done during closed session and why it's important to not discuss a potential list of candidates, how that may impact their positions, where they are currently. Just if you could talk a little bit about that and sort of just remind the public about what that act, that process looks for, looks like before we get there. I think that that's important also to state again, if you don't mind.
I think you're right because we, we have a different audience here tonight. It was decided by the board that this would be a confidential search. That was our recommendation so we can maximize the candidate pool. At the same time, though, the board also wanted an inclusive community engagement process. We have accomplished that. And that should continue all the way up until the candidate pool is presented to you, which would be probably, I told you about the second week in February. At that point, people should continue to discuss their ideas with board members, what they're looking for. But once we talk about that pool, it's going to be confidential until you name your candidate, your superintendent. And in that way, we're protecting the integrity of the process. And these people that have school boards they work with, have families, all this is something that, you know, the integrity and the confidentiality is, is something that's important. It's critical. And if it gets violated, it can impact your search. We're not, and again, we, unfortunately, we've seen some issues, just not very many. But it's very important that people understand your, your job is to get the best possible superintendent you can. In order to do that, you want to maximize your candidate pool. That's the advice we gave you when we had our meeting on October twenty-eighth.
Let me clarify, let me clarify. Kevin is not referring to we've seen issues in Prince William. He, he's referring to the fact that in, in other searches, when the board didn't honor the confidentiality and a, and violated that, it affected who stayed in the pool or who applied. And, and so the issues that we're talking about, we're trying to eliminate those issues so that we have the best possible pool.
May I ask a question about the, you guys have so much experience in superintendent searches and many of us are very, very new to the board. And even those of us who've been on the board for a while have never engaged in this process. Like you came up with the three questions. Are you going to provide us with guidance or on the questioning? I help us through this process?
Yes, yes. That, Kevin, yes, that's part of what we do when we present the candidate pool. The second part of that discussion is we walk through, we, we talk about cautions about interviewing. We talk about, we give you sample questions. We answer any questions you have. Kevin will explain all of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
One more.
Ms. Williams?
Just briefly go over again, you know, the, the depth and level to which you have advertised this position. And I spoke a minute ago about, we've already got a diverse candidate pools of applicants from like eleven states. But I think it's really important that folks know, our public, that the position is just not posted per se on your website as a search form, but it's, it's posted in a variety of places. And the reason why I think that's important is because different people look at different platforms and media. And we know that we're trying to encourage the best of the best to apply. So I just want to make sure that the public knows that it's not just a centrally located application or we're, we're not advertising in other areas. If you could talk a little bit about what diversity of where we're advertising, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
There's a association of Superintendent Association, AASA. Anyone that's looking for jobs, they look at that. They're also a magazine called Ed Week. But we also have advertisements in, with the black superintendents groups, also Latinx groups. Wayne also has a connection with Harvard where that's going out. So we, we don't just stick to a couple. We, we, we do the gamut. We have found that by having that outreach, it does help us, I think, encourage a diverse pool. And, and that's been the results of what we've been doing. Wayne, would you like to add anything else on that?
No, I would just say that the moment the vacancy announcement was available, I sent it to the director of the Harvard, Harvard Urban Superintendent's Program. She sent it out across the entire urban superintendents group. That's a thirty-year program. And we started to get inquiries back as a result of just that one. The American Association of School Superintendents is the largest superintendent organization in the world, literally about eighteen thousand members. It goes there. Ed Week is red. So it's wide distribution of the vacancy.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. And then I think with that, I think it is, I'd like to thank the, the entire staff who's joined us on the call this evening. Thank you for participating. Division Council, Mary McGowan, Carol Marchand, thank you for all the work you've done to support our search firm, our IT folks, communications, Mr. Gilfoyle, Diana Galata for supporting everybody and, and Keith, Mr. Iman and the entire staff. I think from the entire school board to the public, we want to wish you a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. And please be safe and enjoy yourselves and for this much needed break coming up. Without any further discussion, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.